Page 111, Hymn 276. We were talking last night about Elder Lloyd Wall, and I think, I think he used this as an opening hymn more than any other. Almost every meeting I remember him being in, we'd start with this one. So we'll sing, "Tis religion that can give sweetest pleasures while we live; 'Tis religion must supply solid comfort when we die. After death its joyous will be lasting as eternity. Be the living God my friend, then my bliss shall never end." (Singing) "Tis religion that can give sweetest pleasures while we live; Be the living God my friend, then my bliss shall never end." Let's bow together and tempt to go before the Lord with a prayer. O's kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank Thee that Thou hast brought us together at this place at this time today. We thank Thee for the brethren that Thou hast brought to us from afar. We thank Thee that they have refreshed our souls. We pray that Thou would be with us now, that we might be blessed to hear a word from on high in our ears, saying, "This is the way, walk ye in it." And we might be blessed with Thy presence, that Thou would teach us, give us understanding of Thy Word and Thy great salvation. We know we're nothing in and of ourselves, but we know that Christ is our all and all, making Him more and more precious to us. Be with those of our number that could not be with us today, keep them, comfort them, give them that which is necessary. Lord, we don't know how to pray for ourselves. We pray that Thy Spirit would make intercession for us as well as for those who have asked in interest in our prayers and those who are on our hearts. All these things we ask in the blessed name of Jesus. Amen. Well, since we sang the third Psalm this morning, I kinda looked at that last verse, verse eight, as we sang it. And I think it kinda sums up what we believe and where our hope is as well. Psalm 3:8, "Salvation belongeth to the Lord; Thy blessing is upon thy people," Silas. Think about it. That's what Silas means. It means pause and consider, as we'd say it now. Think about it. David here is, this is a psalm that David wrote, and the title says, "Asama David, When He Fled From Absalom His Son." Can you imagine having your son rise up against you? To make war against you, to try and depose you from your authority in your throne? It's one thing if another, if an enemy would do it, but this is one of your own household, your own son coming after you. And you have no choice but to flee before him. "Lord, how art thou, they increase the trouble me; many are they that rise up against me." Now I'm gonna tell you something. Even though I venture to say we've never had the physical distress that David went through there, I'm willing to bet we've had a spiritual distress much like it, that we have seen and we have felt in our innermost being, in our soul, if you will. "Lord, how they're increased the trouble me!" I got temptation and sin. I got Satan, but more than that, I've got this old man within me that is not subject to law, because it can't be, because it's enmity against the law of God. And everything seems to be against me. If I try to go forward, you got my way hedged up with stones. If I try to go backward, you got a pit there for me to fall into. If I go to the left hand or the right hand, thorns would be sent me. Everything is against me. You ever said that? I have. I'll admit it. I've said it. Everything's against me. You've just, you've just put me in this situation, Lord. "Many there be which say, 'My soul,'" There's no help for him in God. Look at him. His God's not helping him. He's on the run. Little do they know, "But Thou art, oh Lord, a shield for me, my glory, and the lifter up of my head." He couldn't turn to men. And brethren, when we are brought into a spiritual condition similar to what David was naturally, man can't help you there either, because what's he gonna tell you? You go to this one. He'll say, "You know, if you come here to my meeting, I'll get you on a program, and you'll be out doing, and you can work, and the Lord is just gonna shower down blessings upon you because of what you do." Down deep in your heart, you might even try it, but down deep in your heart, you know it's doomed to failure. Why? The works of your hands cannot satisfy that which is against you, and that which is against you is the holy law of God. That which is against you is the commandment contained in ordinances. That which says, "Do not kill," and you can look at it and say, "Well, I've never killed anybody. Never stolen. I'm a pretty good fella." Ever told a little quiet lie? You're guilty of false witness. Guess what? Scripture tells us plainly, "He that offends at one point, one point, is guilty of the whole thing." Because you can't pick and choose what commandments you're gonna obey. Many times good at that. I've got to digress just for a minute off here. Many times good at picking out which commandments he wants to obey. You got a whole group of people out there that says the Fourth Commandment, "Remember the Sabbath day to keep it holy," is still a commandment for the children of God today, but not unless the other nine are too. Because it's a unit. It's the law. It's not a law. It's the law. It's that which was given by God to show you something. Well, what's it given to show? What's required of you. Is that all? No, that's not all. That's what most people think though, isn't it? "Man, I look at them ten commandments, and I know what I've got to do to get on God's good side." Those ten commandments were given for one reason and one reason only, to show you you can't keep them, to show you how powerless you are. "Yes, this is my standard," says God, and guess what? You can't come up with one after one of them, much less do it alone, and have done it all from the time you came forth from the womb till right now. Because if you ever did miss one, you've got no way of making it up. All the goodness you can claim from this point forward cannot erase one sin of the past. If you could be perfect from today till the day you die, that would do nothing to alleviate the guilt that came before them. Yeah, that's what these perfectionists don't realize. That's what these legalists don't realize. They're gonna put you on a program, they're gonna show you what to do, they're gonna give you works, and they're gonna tell you God will have to bless you for it. God doesn't have to bless you for anything. His blessings are for his people. That's what we read just a minute ago, isn't it? Everybody sees failure in themselves. When you start seeing goodness and when you start seeing the, that you're coming up, as it were, that you're getting better and better, watch out. The Lord's getting ready to show you where you stand in reality. Well, let's get back, well, as I started to say, they take that Fourth Commandment on the Sabbath and say, "You gotta obey it." Brethren, that's done away with too. Jesus Christ is our Sabbath. He is our rest. You want a Sabbath? That's a rest. "He that is finished from his works, as God did from his." That's the one that's in the Sabbath. That's the one that's in the rest. "There remaineth therefore a rest." To anybody that'll claim it? No, to the people of God. That's the only ones that get it. Yes, God's children, God's people. So there be those that say, "By my soul, there's no help from him in God." God's not gonna help him. Look at him running away. And if you let people know the depth of the cries of your soul, most of them gonna say the same thing. Man, you hear what old sad, he talking about how evil he is, how bad he is. God's gonna send him to hell for sure. Don't bet on it. "Thou, oh Lord, art a shield to me, my glory, and the lifter up of mine head. I cried to the Lord with my voice, and he heard me out of his holy ear." I cried to the Lord with my voice. The Lord's ears are open to the cries of his children. And guess what? Every one of them cried to him. Oh, we might make a noise to men sometimes, but when it comes right down to it, our cry is to Almighty God. And for every one of his children, he hears them. His ears are open to their cry. He knows because they're his children. There's a line in a hymn we sing sometimes. "All our prayers and all our praises rightly offered in his name." He who dictates them is Jesus. He who answers is the same. See, he's put that word in your mouth. "Thy word is not even in thy mouth, and when it's in thy mouth, you cry forthback to the God that gave it to you, and he hears it." And rather than get up and work, rather than struggle, and rather than get at all of the things that men would have him do, what David do, I laid me down and slept. Sometime, if you have opportunity, look and see how many times it says, "Be still, sit still, wait, not get up and be doing." Oh, you'll find that. You'll find that. That's what the Egyptian taskmasters told the Israelites when they were in bondage to them. They said, "You're idle. You're idle. Get up and make more bricks. Go gather your own straw to make 'em with. We ain't gonna give you any anymore. Y'all just sitting around too much. Idle hands are the devil's workshop." Now, David says, "I laid me down and slept, and I'm reminded of the scripture that says, 'He giveth his beloved sleep.'" You ever had a tossing and a turning night? Nights when you just couldn't rest? And you wonder why? But then you have another night, and it's all peace, because God gave it to you. He giveth his beloved sleep. "I awakened." Why? "For the Lord sustained me." Oh, excuse me. "For the Lord sustained me." "The Lord sustained me." David didn't have any kind of effort to put out in sleep, did he? Did he? No. You and I go to sleep just like him. We don't know that we gonna wake up at night. We have hope that we will. Sometimes maybe we hope that we don't. I tell you what, the way this old world's getting, sometimes I think, "Lord, come quickly. Come quickly." "I laid me down and slept, and I awakened. For the Lord sustained me." He woke me up. He gave me sleep, and he awakened me. "I will not be afraid of ten thousand of people. I will not be afraid of ten thousands of people that have set themselves against me round about." That's because I got such a good army. Let's spiritualize it. Let's say, "Because I got a good army of prayer warriors here around me." No, no. Neither one. "I'll not be afraid of ten thousands of people that have set themselves against me round about. Why not?" "Arise, oh Lord, save me, oh my God." Despite the fact that the odds look to be mighty stacked against him, David knew that the Lord was the one who was gonna fight his battle for him. And he could cry unto God, "Arise, oh Lord, and save me." "Arise, oh Lord, and save me." He didn't say, "I'm gonna get Goliath sword out." He didn't say, "I've got my bowman ready." He didn't say, "I'm going out here to the forest and build me up some cherries. We'll take care of this mess." Lord strengthened them so that they could do that. No, he said, "Arise, oh Lord, save me, oh my God." He put no trust in the hands of men. And now, in this wonderfully enlightened day and age, we find men standing behind pulpits all over this country, indeed, all over this world, saying, "Put yourself in my hands, for just as bad, your salvation's in your own hands." When it isn't. And the poor child of grace knows that. His cry is the same cry as David's, "Arise, oh Lord, and save me, because I can't save myself. If I could stop sinning, I would, but I can't do it. Not only that, if I could be righteous, I'd do it, but I can't. I'd fill myself with the apostle Paul, who said, 'When I would do good, evil is present with me.'" I feel like he was when he said, "Oh wretched man that I am." And the multitudes of this world wanna turn that thing around and make it say, "Oh wretched man that I was." No, Paul is wretched at this point, as he writes at that time. And he cries out, "Who shall deliver me from the body of this death?" It's him, isn't it? "And am I born to die?" Yes, you are. You're born to die. Lay this body down. And in dying, we mark it down, as it were, that we're sinners. What do you mean? Well, this body dies because of sin. What was the promise in the garden to Adam? "Adam, of every tree in this garden you can eat, except for one, the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. For, not if, but in the day thou eatest thereof, thou shalt surely die." And death began to be in Adam from that point. And so death has reigned on all, over all, even who didn't sin like Adam did. Adam transgressed the law of God. Why don't you say the law was the ten commandments? The law's whatever God says it is at that time. Adam's law was, "Don't eat that one fruit." Serpent came, deceived Eve. She says, "Adam, this is good, good. This is good fruit. Y'all try it." He looked at it, and he looked at her. And what overcame him was not a desire to rebel against his God. Listen to me. What overcame Adam in the garden was not a desire to rebel against his God, rather, it was a love for Eve that despite the fact that he knew that she had transgressed the word of God, that she had transgressed the commandment, that she had violated what God told him to do. He loved her so much, he was going down with her. He was going down with her regardless, not because of some grand desire to rebel, but because of love. Somebody say, "Well, how long was Adam and Eve together? It might have been one hour, it might have been one day, it might have been a week, it might have been a century. I have no idea, because the book doesn't tell us. But it was long enough that they were knit together in a love that made them inseparable, that despite the fact that she was deceived and took of that fruit, Adam must do the same thing, also knowing the consequences. And all those that were born from him were born in his image, as it were, or after his kind. That might be a better one. Isn't that what says in Genesis, "Everything reproduces after its kind"? So guess what? A sinner's gonna reproduce a sinner. A sinner is not going to reproduce innocents. It's gonna reproduce another sinner. And that's you, and that's me, and that's everybody else that's been born on this planet. We're all sinners by nature. And because we're sinners by nature, we're sinners by practice. And we know that we can't stop. I've heard it said. In fact, it's been said to me. Y'all old predestinarians, if I believed like you do, I'd go out and sin all I wanted to. Didn't think of it at the time. Didn't say, "Don't you already sin all you want to?" I sin more than I want to. When one's been taught of God that sin is an offense before his holy throne and before his holy eyes, and that no sinner can enter into his presence, if you have been taught of the Lord, you want to get rid of that. It's just that you can't find any way to do it. You know what? David saw it. "Arise and save me. Salvation belongeth unto the Lord." I think old Peter. "There's Jesus with his apostles. Whom do men say that I am?" Some say, "You're John the Baptist risen from the dead." How about others? Isaiah Jeremiah, one of the prophets? That's well and good. Who do y'all say I am? Peter stood up and said, "You're the Christ. You're the Messiah. You're the Anointed One, the Son of the Living God." And what did Jesus say? Did Jesus look at Peter and say, "Peter, I'm glad your free will brought you to that decision?" Of course he didn't. He said, "Peter, blessed are you. You're a blessed man, not because you made the confession. 'Flesh and blood hath not revealed this unto you, but my Father, which is in heaven.'" He was blessed. He was blessed because he had a revelation from God of what he was. I believe one has to have a revelation of what you are before the revelation of Jesus Christ can mean anything to you. Just like the apostle Paul on the road to Damascus had to be struck down before he realized who was talking to him. And you and I are the same way. Salvation belongeth to the Lord. Therefore, it's his to give to whom he will. You know, that's, that's the fearful thing about this doctrine. It's a doctrine of great comfort to me to know that our God is in the heavens. He hath done whatsoever he hath pleased. He does whatsoever he pleases among the armies of heaven and the inhabitants of the earth, and none can stay his hand or say to him, what doest thou? We know that all things are working together for good to them who are called according to his purpose. That's a comfort to you, someone. If you're able to see the mighty hand of God working in all things that transpire on this earth. If you can see the mighty hand of God directing these events. Reason not fear. That's the big picture, so to speak. Let's get down to the little picture. Where do I fit in? You're gonna fit in into one of two camps. Elect. Elect, chosen. Were chosen in Christ Jesus before the foundation of the world. And when David went on here and said, salvation belongeth unto the Lord. Thy blessing is upon thy people, upon thy people. That's the ones he's talking about. The chosen, the elect. Those who've been brought from darkness into his marvelous light, not by anything that they've done, but by the Spirit of Almighty God coming upon them and giving them life where there was death. Not just any kind of life. Jesus said, I'm come. That they, and I believe that they is this here, thy people, might have life. And might have it more abundantly. Might have it more abundantly. What happens when you got two opposing forces? You got a warfare, don't you? Have you? Have you got a warfare? You got an old man born of Adam, sent her to the core. You got a new man born of the Spirit of God. That's the people of God. And these two are contrary one to the other. There's a line in the hymn we sing sometimes. When all this is done, and his heart is assured, talking about the Christian, of the total remission of sin. When his pardon is signed, and his peace is procured. From that moment, it's not his peace begins, is it? From that moment, his conflict begins. Fighting's within. Fear's without. Fighting's without. Fear's within. Brother, this is, this is where we have to look at it and say, tis a point I long to know. Often causes anxious thought. Do I love the Lord or no? Am I his, or am I not? If I am, why am I thus? Why am I thus? Let me tell you something, brother. Salvation belongeth to the Lord, and he giveth it to whom he will. And he gives them a blessing. Thy blessing is upon thy people. You know what that blessing is? Christ in you, the hope of glory. That new man is Christ in you, the hope of glory. I'm gonna ask you a question. If you felt that hope, would you trade it for ten thousand worlds? Would you give it up? Even though it might seem little? Even though you have to wonder? Is it real? That's my fear, more than anything else. Is this hope reality with me? Or is it just something that I've heard about so much that I can talk about it in a good language? Probably Paul went through that, don't you? He said, I fear, lest I preach to others, and I myself would be found cast away or reprobated. Complacency has no part with the Christian. Rest is his thing. Rest in Jesus. Looking unto him. Looking away from yourself for anything to do with this. Salvation belongeth to the Lord. Not to me, not to the church, not to you. And he bestows this grace, this blessing, upon his people. His people. In David's day, that people was typical, wasn't it? It was a picture. It was the physical nation of Israel. Now it's that spiritual Israel. It's the ones that were given to Christ Jesus. The ones whom he redeemed. The ones whom he said of on the night he was betrayed, and he took the cup. He said, this is blood of the new covenant, which is shed for many for the remission of sins. Whose hope is it nothing but him? And his blood. Shed. His blood washing. His blood covering that handwriting of ordinances that was against us, that was contrary to us, when he took it out of the way and nailed it to his cross. Salvation, O melodious sound, to wretched dying men. Salvation that from God proceeds and leads to God again. Isn't that a beautiful thought? It's not up to you. It's not up to me. It's God who does these things. It's God who gives it to us. It's God who sets forth. And it's not just God. Notice here. Salvation belongeth unto the Lord. In our common version, when you see that word Lord in all caps, like it is here, that's the covenant name of God. Jehovah, Yahweh, however you wanna pronounce it. That the Jews thought so sacred, they couldn't, they couldn't say it. Shows the relationship that's there. Because without that relationship, you're not a part of the family. If you're not a part of the family, you have no blessing in the covenant. If you're not in the family, you have no salvation. But if you are, if you were chosen in him before the foundation of the world, if he was given, if you were given to him, if he bore you all the days of his pilgrimage. If you died in him, laid in the tomb with him, and rose again with him. In that oneness with him, it's life, salvation, and an eternity of bliss. You know, I, I get kinda confused sometimes watching modern religion. It seems all of them, for the most part. Now, I'm not talking about the old Baptist. I'm talking about the modern religious world. They want their blessings here in time. They want them right now. Man, give them to me, every one of them. And I'll do whatever it takes to get them. I'm reminded of when Jesus told the story about the rich man and Lazarus. And the rich man died and was in hell. Lazarus died and was carried to Abraham's bosom. What did Abraham tell that rich man? Well, you had your good things in this life. Kinda implying, now look where you are. Old Lazarus, he didn't have much. But he's in the family, so he's here with me. I kinda worry about them that try to, that want all their blessings now and in this life. Because the great blessing of salvation is eternity. It's an eternity of bliss. Free from everything that plagued us on this earth. Sin, self, and Satan. All done away. Only one way to get there. Through Jesus Christ. And the choice that God made of the children in him. Hope that the Lord has blessed us to think on these things and consider them. Let's, let's bow before him again and attempt to pray. Lord, we thank thee for the time that thou hast given us, and we thank thee for thy word. We pray that thou would manifest thy salvation to our hearts. That thou would cause our souls to be lifted up unto thee. That thou would show us our nature, and that thou would show us thy glory. That thou be merciful to us and remember our sins and iniquities no more. Go with us. Keep us. Bring us back together again if it be thy will. For it's in the name of Jesus we have, amen. Brother Moon, do you have a word to say to us, while we're here? Brother Howard? Brother James, you got a word to say to us, while we're here? While we're assembled? Nobody's got anything. That's all right. You may consider yourselves dismissed.